Call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It's June 18th, 2012, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Larry Yoder to lead us in the invocation, and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise?
Let's pray our kind and gracious most heavenly Father as we come tonight to do the business of the county, we'd ask that your blessings be upon us. Help us that we'd make the decisions that are in the best interest of Alexander County and the citizens of this great county. Lord, we'd ask you be with our state and our local governments and our federal government as they continue to try to make their money work out right, to do their best to look after the people of both the state and the United States. Be with our military personnel, both at home and abroad. Be with the Alexander County National Guard, Lord, as they're deployed, be with them and their families, and look after them and keep them safe. For we ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners' report. Is there any commissioners that would like to report on any thing? I would like to mention one thing that Larry had touched on in the invocation. The 882nd Engineer Company is going to be deploying to Kuwait. There will be a ceremony in Moxville at 2:00 that will be kind of their deployment ceremony. So if you'd like to go, you can probably contact the county office or call the National Guard, and they will let you know more of the details. Also, I'd like to say, I did not know this, but my second cousin, Wes, is interning with the Taylorsville Times from Ohio University. He's a rising senior and is majoring in journalism. And he'll be there for several weeks this summer, and he's sitting there in the press table with Micah. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some favorable coverage.
It's hard not to say something. Keep going, Kevin.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do kind of follow up your comments about the military, and I know I've said this probably to the point where people don't want to hear me say it anymore. Maybe that's not the case. But we still want to solicit, if anybody knows of any WWII veterans, Korean War veterans, Vietnam War veterans, war in Panama, or the conflict in Panama, any conflict in the 20th century, we still want to get those folks on video. And I was talking to Ginger Anis, our Veteran Service Coordinator, the other day. So far, we've only got 15 people identified. We haven't got them all recorded yet. And I know there's got to be more than that number of people in the county, especially WWII vets. And we've got to get those people on video before it's too late. And I know we're going to, in our next Veterans Committee meeting, we're going to start working more with the churches in the county to get the word out to them, because, you know, not everybody in the county watches this county commissioners' meeting. And so we just encourage everybody, if you have names, to contact Ginger Anis. And if you haven't seen the recordings, you need to go to the county website or the county Charter cable channel and look at the videos that have been recorded. They're really stirring. We've got veterans from WWII and Korean War and Vietnam War already recorded, and they're really interesting stories. But we just don't want to lose these memories for future generations. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Berkey. I would like to say one more thing, not to point you out again, Wes, but I did not mention this, that you are actually, you live in Ohio. So he is not from Alexander County. His grandfather is my uncle, and, but he is here doing an internship, and he thought enough of Taylorsville and Alexander County to travel all the way from Ohio and stay here over the summer. So please give him a warm welcome if you see him out. Adoption of the agenda. I would like to add Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 54, and I'll make that into form of a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number one is the adoption of the 2012-2013 Budget Ordinance Amendment for, not amendment, Budget Ordinance for Alexander County. I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, you have the 2012-2013 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County, and it contains the budgets for fire departments, water districts, all other costs associated with county government for the upcoming year, fiscal year, the tax rate. There is, of course, no increase there. There is a small water rate increase and a small increase in the Vasco Fire Department. We'd like to point out that we have included funds, we've been talking about this for some time, for a cap, County Capital Projects Fund appropriation, which is a million 500,000, which takes our budget number to $33,231,226. And that is for, I would call that for the parts, for the projects related to the courthouse project, which that's the next step with the jail and detention project. So we need to set that up. And related to that is Budget Amendment Number 54, which is the other piece of that, but that's included. And if you look at, on the second page, due to other funds, it has a million 985,000, and a million five of that is for the capital project fund. I don't know of anything else unless anyone has any questions. We've had numerous work sessions, and we had our public hearing in our last meeting. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any questions?
Will this cost me 100% of the county's if we do these capital funds, or are we going to get money from some other source to help with this?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to apply for economic grant funds for most of this project and get, stand to get up to 50% of the money back.
That sounds better.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'd like to thank county manager and the finance department, the work they put into this, Jennifer Herman and her staff, also department heads. Everybody works hard to get this pulled together, and I want to say thank you. And I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None?
Well, the fact that we have a $33 million budget, that doesn't necessarily mean that we will spend the whole $33 million, does it? It just means that we have it appropriated if we find all of this necessary. It doesn't necessarily, because did we not spend less of the last budget last year than we appropriated?
Yes, ma'am. We have for the last three years, I know expenditures have been less than budget, but we've been fortunate, everybody has watched, and we haven't had any big unexpected things pop up either. So, and part of that capital expenditure would cover some of that if it happened to.
Well, that was kind of upsetting to me because the budget had increased so much from last year, from 29 million up to 33. But I can see where we need to cover ourself if something comes up, especially with these big projects that we're going to undertake this year.
Judy, if I may add to your comments, I know you and I have talked a lot prior to this meeting and talk often, and it's important to me that we are, we as a commission, are wise about spending the taxpayers' money. And that's what we're doing. And the questions you're asking are very apropos. We're only going to spend the money that we absolutely, positively have to spend. Now, that's easy to say, but we are committed to doing that. If we don't need to spend it, we won't spend it. But the issue is, and it's kind of what Darrell is alluding to, if we don't appropriate the money in the budget, we won't have to spend if we need to spend it. And like Rick says, the county manager, some of this money will be reimbursed with grants. And so therefore, I believe it's a wise budget, even though it is a budget increase. We spent, Darrell and myself and Rick spent many hours in the Budget Committee going over the budget, and I am a physically conservative person, and I'm satisfied that the budget is the right budget.
Yeah, the Finance Committee spent a lot of time on this, and Darrell Robertson and Berkey Jennings, they are on the Finance Committee, so we need to thank them for all the long, long, long hours that they put in. If you don't know, that if more than three commissioners are in a meeting at one time, then it's an open, public meeting, and a lot of other rules apply. So we try to keep two commissioners on different committees. I'm sure that this budget is not 100% perfect in each of our minds, but it is a very, very good budget. I'm sure that I would have changed a few things, as each one of us would have, but that's probably a good thing. No one person gets everything that they think needs to go into the budget, and that's called democracy. So we've got to work things out, and that's what we do. And we work good together, and we appreciate all the hard work that the county manager and the finance director have put into this budget, and we'll move forward with it.
You don't need to worry. These four boys has got a woman looking after them. It's unusual for a woman to not want to spend money.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. We've got another budget behind us.
Or in front of us.
In front of us. The planning's behind us. Item number two on the agenda, 10-year solid waste management plan update. Call on Josh Mitchell, Solid Waste Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Commissioner Mayberry said, I'm here tonight to talk about the 10-year solid waste management plan. This is a requirement by the state that we have a long-term, long-range plan that covers all aspects of solid waste management. And every three years, we have to come in and do a little update. If things have changed or not, we still have to go in and redo the plan. This plan includes all aspects of solid waste management. As I said, disposal is one aspect it covers, and right now and for the next three years, we're going to continue to transport our commercial, industrial, and municipal solid waste to Foothills Environmental Landfield in Caldwell County. And then we also have, we operate a construction, demolition landfill at the solid waste site here in Alexander County. The plan also covers everything about recycling here in the county, from electronics to tires, cans, plastic bottles, all that stuff. It talks about enforcement, where we have a solid waste enforcement officer, which is myself, to go out and handle solid waste complaints. It also speaks of education and cooperative extension. Office helps with the education. Suzanne Reinhardt does a great job going out to the schools and talking every year, and I myself as well will go out and talk to different groups upon request. Going to the Gualtoni Ruhr Tan Club tomorrow night, as a matter of fact. And then those things, we'll talk about anything from if they want to talk about disposal, recycling, or the whole gamut. And also in the plan, it covers solid waste emergency debris sites, which we have three in the county, which are located at East Park, Dusty Ridge Park, and JC Park. And these sites are there in case we have a big-time event here in the county where a lot of debris, storm debris, is created. And say, if roads happen to be closed down, we could temporarily store the debris at these sites till it could be handled properly. And to get money back from FEMA, you have to have sites like this throughout your county. The requirements of the plan, you have to have a public meeting where the public can come and speak of their concerns. We had this meeting, May the 24th, at the landfill, and there was no one attending. The town of Taylorsville is a municipality covered in this plan. I attended their commissioners' meeting, June the 5th, and they approved the plan. And then, of course, I'm here tonight seeking this commission's approval for this three-year updated plan. I just kind of wanted to give a broad overview of it, but would be happy to discuss or answer any questions that you might have.
Well, Josh, you know I'm going to ask you, how many tons we send out a day to Caldwell County? I always do.
A day, we're probably around 50, 50 tons right now. I know it's around 17,000 tons a year it speaks of here in the plan. That's a number that changes quite a bit, but this is showing in 2010, 2011 year, we sent 17,657 tons to Foothills Environmental.
I had underlined that, but that's, and I'm remembering numbers now, which is dangerous for me, but when we started with the recycle, or with the transfer station, seems like our tonnage then was about 35, 37 tons a day. Is that?
When you first?
In 1990?
I think it was 75. Might be what the building was designed for.
Okay, so we're actually about, we're sending out about two-thirds of what we did then.
We're way down. There's a sheet in here that does a waste reduction sheet, and they make you base a lot of your numbers off the per capita disposal rate for 1990 and 91, which our per capita disposal rate in those years was .9 tons, right? Almost a ton a person thrown away a year. And the last year, I think we were around, all the numbers in here somewhere, around .6 tons.
Well, in 98 then, we were sending out about 75 tons of trash per day. Now we're at 50 tons.
Yes, sir.
A good part of that difference is in recycling.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to, I wanted you to say it so you get to take credit for it, because you and your staff do a lot, have done a lot, to make that happen. And as far as the recyclables, we don't make a lot of money off of recyclables, but it saves us a lot of money because we don't have to put it in the landfill.
Yes, sir.
And we do appreciate that.
And you said a great thing there. I've got a great bunch of people at the convenience sites and the landfill that help educate the citizens when they come in and try to explain to them why we can't throw certain things away, because it's law now that you have to recycle a lot of stuff. And not to say, that don't go there, you know, explain to them why we do it and the benefits of recycling and, you know, why it's a good thing all around. And while I'm here, I'll mention the per capita rankings for recycling came out about a month ago, and we stayed at the same spot, 18th in the state, but what that didn't show was that we actually gained 20 pounds a person from fiscal year 2010, fiscal year 2011. So that's a huge jump in recycling tonnages, if you think about 20 pounds a person, 36,000 people, you know, that's a big jump.
There's another point in the issue of recycling, too, is recyclables, the plastics and so forth, are not biodegradable. So that's another reason to keep them out of the landfill.
Yes, sir.
And have them recycle, because if you put them in the ground, they'll be here for the next 400, 500 years. So it's good for the environment, too, as well as the positive aspects of recycling, too.
I mean, a landfill is designed to keep out air and water and sunlight, which is things needed for something to break down. So basically, when you put something in a landfill, whether it be plastics or not, it's going to be there for a very, very long time. And most everything that gets thrown away is made of some type of natural resource, which we all know how important those are to conserve and not just dump them in a hole and leave them forever.
All we need to do is go back to glass bottles and put up a deposit and take them back and recycle them, but we'll not get into that tonight.
Well, Josh, is it, is this the way it is at the convenience sites? You must recycle, or do people actually come in there and pay the fee and not recycle?
I keep the numbers, you know, the site attendants fill out a sheet that says, this many people came in, then there's another block there that said, this many people didn't recycle.
Okay.
And it's usually around 90% of the people that visit a convenience site recycle, because there's two incentives to recycling. All right, first of all, it's going to save you a dollar, then it's saving you money a second way, because you have less bags of garbage, which we base our fees on the number of bags you have. So it's really saving you money two different ways. Plus, I mean, it's just the right thing to do as far as, you know, saving natural resources and landfill space and all the way around.
Do you think it would be advantageous for us to require this 10% and say, you must bring us recyclables?
Well, that might be pretty tough to handle, you know. Like I say, the site attendant's not going to be able to go down to the dumpsters and watch every person, see what they throw away or don't throw away.
No, I mean, the people that come in that say, I'm not recycling.
Right.
And pay the full fee. I mean, you know, if it's 10%, would it be possible to say to them, starting as of July 1, you must bring your garbage with some recyclables?
I mean, that would be something I would want to leave up to the commission to decide. That would scare me that I would end up picking up off a side of dirt road if we did that, you know?
And I recycle.
Already, by the way.
I recycle, but I don't take recyclables to the convenience center every time I go.
Right.
If I'm running tight on time and I got two bags, I'll pay the extra dollar, but my recyclables come the next time.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to be hard to, it'd be hard to want.
Well, I was just thinking, how could we break those 10% into being believers like the other 90?
Well, there's some people that just ain't going to do it. I mean, they just, they don't want to take the time to separate it. And that's why, you know, we really try to educate people on the benefits of it, you know, not just it's going to save you money, which is what everybody sees, you know, to begin with, but, you know, when you start looking at the big picture and see that this is the way of the future and the way things really should be done, then, you know, hopefully we'll get everybody, but not going to get them all.
Well, I can see that, but it doesn't make me not want to keep trying.
Judy, I, just a thought, too, Josh, it's kind of on the same wavelength that Judy is on. It still amazes me in the conversations we've had in different sessions about how many people still throw garbage off the roads.
Mm-hmm.
Even though we have these minimum housing ordinances and appearance ordinances in place, you're still having to go around, dig through the trash, hopefully find an address, track the person down, and, or if you can't, you have to pick it up. And I didn't even know until we had these conversations, that kind of stuff was still going on since we had the convenience centers.
Oh, yes.
So there, a part of it is like we're saying here, some people are never going to comply to these ordinances, no matter what you do to them, unless maybe you put striped uniforms on and let them go pick the trash up along the highway for a couple of years, and they may change their mind a little bit. But I just think you do a fantastic job on all the things that you have in your, on your pallet. And the solid waste management is one of them, the convenience centers, which goes along with that, but also policing the roads and so forth. I know I'm kind of getting off of the solid waste thing, but I think you're a model employee for the county for the things that you do above and beyond the call of duty, above and beyond normal working hours, too, and I just want you to know that.
I appreciate that. You're going to make me blush, I believe, but thank you very much. I take my job seriously, but.
Yeah, Judy said you want a raise. I'm not.
No, I said he'll be wanting a raise.
No, but I want to mention again, all my, my co-workers and staff, too. You know, I couldn't do it all or any of it without them, so.
But you do a great job.
Well, I appreciate that.
And you did say an important thing, because I happen to know that you have a good staff.
Oh, oh, yes.
Because, see, I go to the landfill.
Josh, spend just a minute or two talking about the composting and grinding down there, if you would, that you did at the landfill.
Yes.
People don't, I guess, a lot of times know about that.
All right. We have, at the landfill, we have a composting and grinding operation, like you say. The state, a few years ago, banned pallets from going into the landfill, so one section down there is just a huge pile of pallets and clean wood, and that is any wood that is not treated or painted, anything like that. So there's a pile of clean, untreated wood. Then we also have a brush pile, which is anything from, you know, if somebody had to cut down a tree, or a tree fell from a storm, trimming bushes or brush, that goes in a pile. Then we have a pile of just leaves and grass, which we do what is called a static pile, which simply is people come in and dump their leaves and grass, and we make a big pile. We monitor the temperature, and when it reaches a certain temperature for three days, we turn it, you know, it's pretty much the simplest way of composting. The pallets and brush, usually around once a year, I will have a contractor, I collect some bids on the grinding process, and have a contractor come in, and they grind the pallets and the clean wood. And usually, I've been able to get rid of it, I've been able to sell it, just depending on the market. Sometimes I've had to give it away. Thankfully, I haven't had to pay to get rid of it. But that's not really something the public wants as mulch around their homes, though. The brush, they grind that as well. We keep the two separate, and the brush, we just give away back to the public for mulch.
What's the largest diameter tree that you can bring?
We haven't really ever turned anybody away. The contractor will have us, basically a log splitter on the end of their track hoe that will split stumps and stuff like that. I mean, if you've got 50 stumps, we need to talk, you know, I mean, that's something that might be pushing it, but, you know, it's kind of a case-by-case thing, you know, but as far as size of a tree, we don't really turn anybody away.
And the leaves, if you've got the pile of leaves and grass down there, do you have the grinder grind it while he's there? Because I know the city of Hickory does that, and it, you know.
We usually just, after we flip it so many times, that stuff gets pretty fine.
Right.
And since we're just giving it away, I know that they, they probably sell theirs, I think. This stuff that we end up with is good for people to put on their gardens, things like that, not necessarily beautiful landscaping material, but we try to not put a whole lot of money in it so we don't have to get anything out of it, I guess.
Right.
You know, tub grinders and stuff are very expensive. It costs several thousand dollars whenever they do come to do the grinding, but that is, you know, hundreds of tons of pallets and brush that they're taking care of at one whack, so. And the price, I should mention that, the price on brush is $25 a ton in pallets, and that's just to try to recoup some of our costs for whenever the contractor does come and do the grinding. And yard clippings, which I call leaves and grass, is free.
All right, thank you, Josh. Any other? Anything else? All right, well, we'll move on to item number three on the agenda. Resolution accepting and endorsing the solid waste management plan of two thousand twelve for Alexander County and call on Josh Mitchell.
All right, so I, I'm assuming you'd just like for me to read through the resolution?
Uh, I can read through it if you'd like and will not read the entire solid waste ordinance management plan. Alexander County Government Resolution Accepting and Endorsing the Solid Waste Management Plan of two thousand twelve for Alexander County. Whereas it is a priority of this community to protect human health and the environment through safe and effective management of municipal solid waste. Whereas the reduction of the amount and toxicity of the local waste stream is a goal of this community. Whereas equitable and efficient delivery of solid waste management services is an essential characteristic of the local solid waste management system. Whereas it is a goal of the community to maintain and improve its physical appearance and to reduce the adverse effects of illegal disposal and littering. Whereas Alexander County Government recognizes its role in the encouragement of recycling markets by purchasing recycled products. Whereas involvement and education of the citizenry is critical to the establishment of an effective local solid waste program. Whereas the state of North Carolina has placed planning responsibility on local government for the management of solid waste. Whereas North Carolina General Statute one thirty A dash three oh nine point zero nine A B requires each unit of local government, either individually or in cooperation with other units of local government, to update the ten-year comprehensive solid waste management plan at least every three years. Whereas the Alexander County Solid Waste Management Department has undertaken and completed a long-range planning effort to evaluate the appropriate technologies and strategies available to manage solid waste effectively. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing board of Alexander County that Alexander County's two thousand twelve ten-year comprehensive solid waste management plan is accepted and endorsed and placed on file with clerk to the board on this day, June eighteenth. Attest Ryan Mayberry, Alexander County Board of Commissioners Chairman and Jamie Starnes, Clerk to the Board.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Josh, don't leave yet. I told you you had a couple of questions.
All right.
I've read a lot of articles about the problems with the new energy-efficient light bulbs, especially because of the mercury that's in them. Is there any advice you can give folks that are either listening or watching about the care and disposal of those light bulbs?
Don't break them. No, I'm just joking. No, it seemed like I saw something on a website. They say if you break one, you want to open the windows in that room, shut it off from the rest of the house, I believe. Somebody might correct me on this. But you want to use gloves, of course. But other than that, you know, is, and you want to, I don't think you want to vacuum it because that will.
Yeah, don't vacuum.
Actually throw out the mercury more. But you can find all kinds of stuff online. I'm not really too in, I mean, too up on the actual disposal of them after they're busted. We accept them for recycling, of course, but seemed like I read somewhere you want to shut that room off from the rest of the house and maybe open the windows. Anybody help me out here if you want.
Well, would you, would you mind doing this? I'm not doing, put you on the spot. Would you mind coming back to some later commission meeting and just really talk about specifics about what one should do in the event that one of the bulbs break?
Oh, yeah.
Because I read an article, I think it came from the fire department of Salisbury. A fellow had broken a bulb and stepped on it.
Mm-hmm, I saw the same one.
Yeah, you probably saw the same thing and really got a severe infection in his foot. So, you know, you don't need to answer all the questions now, but if you can come back at a later time and give us some more specifics, I think that'd be great because people need to be aware of how careful they need to be if they break one of those bulbs.
Yes, sir.
Josh, and since you're talking about this, I'll ask you. I know we went through and replaced a lot of the light bulbs in the county with the energy-saving light bulbs. But did you check into the LED lights? Because that seems to be what, you know, is going to be the real energy-saving bulb in the future.
Right, the LEDs are coming on pretty strong now. When we did all that, the T-twelves, right, you know, they have saved us a lot of power. But when you have the increases from Duke and the energy providers, you know, that kind of offsets. But the LEDs, I haven't looked at it in a little while. It would be more Brad, Brad Gates. The maintenance fellow has really started looking at that. But from what I remember, the LEDs were quite expensive, but they are more efficient and would not have the mercury in them. Because that, the mercury is actually what makes these bulbs as efficient as they are, if I'm correct.
Well, the LED lights are much more efficient and they last much longer than CFLs.
And they don't have mercury in them either.
Yeah, no mercury.
Is that not what we put in the senior center life file?
That would have been the T-twelves. We would replace.
Oh, well, I know we changed all the lighting at that time through a grant.
Right. Now, I don't, as far as I know, they went through and as some went bad, they would upgrade the ballast in the bulbs. We didn't, unless the senior center was different, I don't know if we went through there and did the whole senior center. But from my understanding, they have just went through and as a ballast or a fixture would go bad, we would replace it with the more efficient T-eight and the T-eight bulbs.
I got one question. Why did the federal government take lead out of paint and put mercury in light bulbs?
Good gracious.
Messed up two products. I'll get back to you on that.
I'll have to do some research on that.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thanks for having me.
Uh, we'll move on to item number four, the agreement between Alexander County and town of Taylorsville for the billing and collection of property taxes, an extension of that agreement. Call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a four-year extension of the current agreement we have with the town of Taylorsville to bill and collect their property taxes. We first went into an agreement in two thousand ten. And the agreement that you have before you would, would extend that agreement until two thousand sixteen. It would also, the county rate up to, as far as the money collected would be at three percent and not two percent. So we would receive three percent of the taxes we collect for the town. And we've been doing this for two years and we'd recommend that we extend this four more years to two thousand sixteen. It's worked well for both of us.
I'll make a motion we accept this agreement.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item number five on the agenda, board appointments and reappointments. Call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is the Western Piedmont Council of Government Region E Aging Committee. Reappoint Leanne Ferguson. Phil, is it Even, Ivan?
Evan.
Evan, I'll get it right. Phil Thorson for two years. Senior Center Advisory Committee, reappoint Nan Campbell, Judith Fay, Mickey Earp and Chris Howell for three years. Tax Assessor, reappoint Luther Stocks for four years. Tax Collector, reappoint Guy Curly for four years. Town Planning Board of Adjustments, appoint Bruce Johnson and Carolyn Johnson for three years.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number six on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number forty-seven through fifty-four. Call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Ordinance Amendment number forty-seven is to budget for the year-end salary accrual for the first payroll paid in July. Budget Ordinance Amendment number forty-eight is to budget for the year-end salary accrual for the first payroll paid in July and to increase the solid waste budget, all that's in the solid waste fund, and to increase the solid waste budget for estimated expenses for June two thousand twelve. Number forty-nine is to adjust county water and sewer fund budget based on data from year-to-date revenue reports from the city of Hickory. Number fifty, fifty is to amend the fire district funds and, you know, adjust them as far as the taxes that are collected. Fifty-one is to increase the information technology budget for purchase of Bluetooth equipment for sheriff's department plus other departments' technology equipment. To increase human resources budget for estimated expenses for May and June two thousand twelve. To increase fire emergency services budget for receipt of non-cash grants for homeland security. To adjust the JCPC budget for fiscal year two thousand twelve. Revised funding plan per the state of North Carolina. To increase the DSS budget for additional allocation of federal low-income home energy assistance funds. Number fifty-two is to increase departmental budgets for estimated expenses for the remainder of the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve year. Number fifty-three is to budget for a payment to the school system be used for the high school track resurfacing project. And number fifty-four is the county building acquisition and renovation project, the capital project budget ordinance for one, one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a reason we're buying the Bluetooth for the sheriff's department? What's the reasoning behind that?
It was discussed at a work session several months ago.
I wasn't there, I understand.
Well, I was there.
It's a waste of money.
Absolutely.
And I don't want to put the sheriff's department down or anything, but those guys riding down the road and they got their, they need to, they hold their phones up to their ear and they talk on them. They, they, that Bluetooth, they won't use it ninety percent of the time. I guarantee it. I just about bet you that'll be a waste of money. I just don't see that. I mean, I know these guys, they talk on the radio, their cell rings on, they'll talk on their telephones. They do a good job not putting them down. But a Bluetooth, I just, I totally disagree with that.
Well, I was.
It's a waste of money and just ten thousand dollars down the drain.
Larry, I was at the meeting and we discussed it. We made no, I didn't see any consensus as to what we were going to do about it. It was just in a discussion. I mean, as far as I was concerned, it was just something that came up. I did not know that we had approved to do this.
To the best of my knowledge, the sheriff's department did not request them.
No, they did not request it.
No, and I, I mean, you know, if the sheriff wants something, I'm sure that if Chris needs something, he'll ask us for it. It's not a doubt in my mind. But I just, I just don't see any reason why to buy a deputy or buy the sheriff's department Bluetooth. I just think that's just a total waste of money. And because they, they just don't really, they're not going to use them. I can tell you, they will not use them. And if you think they're going to ride down the road and talk on the Bluetooth and drive a car with two hands, keeping their eyes on the road, they're going to ride down the road, grab the radio, drive with one hand and talk on the radio at a hundred miles an hour chasing somebody. Now, I'm telling you, been there, done that, and these guys know what I'm talking about and they're going to do it. And that's money that could be used for something else in the sheriff's department besides the Bluetooth. I mean, you know.
Did the.
We could put ten thousand dollars in the.
It's not all ten thousand dollars.
Well, no, but just the money.
It's twenty-three hundred dollars.
Twenty-three hundred dollars, it's just a waste of money.
I'm just pointing out, it's not the whole thing.
Okay, that's just a waste of money. There's other things those guys need besides a Bluetooth, I'm telling you, Dave.
We had this discussion and nothing was decided. Did the sheriff's department actually request the Bluetooth technology?
Yes, they've had, they've had the. Yes, they did.
I, I was also at the meeting. I, I don't require, remember the request. I would ask that, I make a motion that we approve all these budget items except the Bluetooth.
And I second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that, well, I, I'd like to ask, what are the other expenses there in that capital ally?
I don't have those in front, Mr. Chairman, but they're not for anything related to that, something else.
It's for the IT stuff, I think, for their laptops and for their cameras and the things that they actually need. And I, I don't, I just don't recall seeing anything that they asked for. There's just other things that they need besides Bluetooth.
Well, I have a question on this one, on page, on fifty-two, number fifty-two. Why are we in, what are we needing there for janitorial services at the license plate agency? What's that in there for?
Just extra cleaning that needed to be done.
Has it already been done and we owe for it or are we?
Yes, ma'am.
It has?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But it wasn't just like a, it was just an oversight in the last budget or what?
Well, we, we haven't been in that building very long. We didn't realize all the expenses that were with the cleaning, that's all.
Maybe I can get some help with my housework.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? The, the motion.
Excuse me, I would like to offer one comment. I'm just sitting here thinking about our discussion and, and maybe I remember it wrong, but I think, Mr., Commissioner Yoder, I think what you're saying is all of your comments are true. And the other thing that I recall from our discussions and our budget discussions, we did not commit to do this. This was not something that we thought was appropriate for all the reasons you gave. And that's why I made an exception to it as far as the motion is concerned. And, and maybe, Mr. French, in deference to you, your memory is probably better than mine, but I still stand by my motion to remove that from the budget amendments.
Well, and I'll just make a top, a comment that we'll all just have to agree to disagree on this. I believe it is a good thing for the sheriff's department to have these Bluetooth devices. I use one myself every day when I'm driving. It is much safer to drive with, but we'll just have to agree to disagree. But I did not know this was, of course, in the budget ordinance amendments until we got our agenda. But we can take this off, we can strike it and we'll come back and revisit it later. Because we're, in, in essence, we're taking off the entire budget ordinance amendment number fifty-one.
You're only removing that part of the twenty-three hundred dollars for Bluetooth.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all we're removing.
All right.
You know, you know, I just.
That's what I second. That's the motion I second.
That was a motion and that was a second.
My mistake, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three hundred dollars for the Bluetooth.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, four to one, sorry. Uh, item number seven on the agenda, Other Business County Managers Report. I call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Handing out copies of the latest sales tax revenue distributions. We have collected a little over three million dollars for the first ten months of the fiscal year. We do receive our sales taxes several months delayed. We budgeted three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. We've been averaging right at three hundred thousand dollars a month. So far, we're about two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars ahead of last year's numbers. And we'd like to point out that we do have to pay the whole harmless portion, which is about eighty-nine thousand dollars, but we're still, that still means we're about two hundred thousand dollars ahead. So numbers are looking better. Just wanted to report that. Also, the NCACC Annual Conference is scheduled for July, sorry, August eighteenth through nineteenth. Wake camp. Urging all the commissioners to tend to and let us know if we can make arrangements. We have to use. Or that our directors, our stay of duty. And information about reception for, and it'll be, it'll be June from eleven, one P, senior center. Also, point out that Woody, our new senior director, she's here to welcome her. All on Thursday, Margot, recognizing, I'm at CVC from two to P M. Margot works in service. So we have, we're recognizing a company at our next who hiring after a minute service. I'll be, are there any questions, Chairman?
Anyone have questions? You want to have questions? Thank you, Mr. French. On to the consent agenda.
Approve.
And a second, discussion. All those in, in favor raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries one.
Opposed. I was not at those meetings, so they were, they were bad. Work session. That's all, next to speak.
All right. We do have a close set for North Carolina statute for three to eighteen, eleven, event the disclosure confidential.